We welcome you again to our Bible study at the House of Abundance, San Antonio, Texas. We shall be studying Romans, chapter ten, tonight. Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we hear again to feed on your word, for it is your word that instructs, corrects, and gives understanding. As we continue with our study of the book of Romans, we pray that you will help us to appreciate the more your love, which you have graciously extended to us through our Lord Jesus Christ. Holy Spirit, teach us, inspire us, and give us understanding. In Jesus' name, amen. Romans, chapter ten. I'll go through the passage. Brethren, my heart's desire and prayer to God for Israel is that they may be saved, for I bear them witness that they have a zeal for God, but not according to knowledge. For they being ignorant of God's righteousness and seeking to establish their own righteousness have not submitted to the righteousness of God; for Christ is the end of the law for righteousness to everyone who believes. For Moses writes about the righteousness which is of the law. The man who does these things shall live by them. By the righteousness of faith, the righteousness of faith speaks in this way: Do not say in your heart, 'Who will ascend into heaven?', that is, to bring Christ down from above; or, 'Who will descend into the abyss?', that is, to bring Christ up from the dead. But what does this say? The word is near you in your mouth and in your heart, that is, the word of faith which we preach, that if you confess with your mouth the Lord Jesus and believe in your heart that God has raised him from the dead, you will be saved; for with the heart one believes unto righteousness, and with the mouth confession is made unto salvation; for the Scripture says, 'Whoever believes on him will not be put to shame; for there is no distinction between Jew and Greek; for the same Lord overall is rich to all who call upon him; for whoever calls on the name of the Lord shall be saved.' How then shall they call on him in whom they have not believed? And how shall they believe in him of whom they have not heard? And how shall they hear without a preacher? And how shall they preach unless they are sent? As it is written, how beautiful are the feet of those who preach the gospel of peace, who bring good tidings of good things! But they have not heard; they have not all obeyed the gospel. For Isaiah says, 'God who has believed our report.' So then faith comes by hearing, and by he- and hearing by the word of God. But I say, have they not heard? Yes, indeed, their sound has gone out to the all the earth and their words to the ends of the world. But I say, did Israel not know? First Moses says, 'I will provoke you to jealousy by those who are not a nation; I will move you to anger by a foolish nation.' But Isaiah is very bold and says, 'I was found by those who did not seek me; I was made manifest to those who did not ask for me.' But to Israel he says, 'All day long I have stretched out my hands to a disobedient and contrary people.' That is Romans, chapter ten. Like Romans, chapter nine, this chapter begins with Paul's deep concern for his brethren, the Israelites, the Jews, for their rejection of the Messiah. Now he's lifting up his heartfelt prayer to God that they will be saved. Why would Paul so strongly desire that Israel be saved? The answer is in verse two. It is because he knew, he could testify to it, that they were zealous for God; they had enthusiasm for God, but not according to knowledge. What knowledge did the Israelites lack that led to their misdirected zeal and passion for God? They were ignorant of God's righteousness and how he bestows his righteousness to people. They didn't understand God's way of making people right with him. Towards the end of chapter nine, Paul tells us how the Jews could not attain God's righteousness because they were not willing to submit to God's plan of salvation, which is through faith in Jesus Christ. Instead, they sought faith in Gi- instead, they sought to establish their own righteousness by works of the law. They believed that one has to abide by everything in the law and work hard to earn your salvation. So outwardly, they were very religious. Paul was once like them. But that was why be- that was why he went after the Christians, persecuting them before his conversion. Let's listen to his testimony. Acts twenty-two, three to four. Acts twenty-two, three to four, Paul says, 'I'm indeed a Jew born in Tarsus of Cilicia, brought up at the feet of Gamaliel, taught according to the strictness of our Father's law, and was zealous towards God, as you all are today. I persecuted this way to the death, binding and delivering into prisons both men and women.' He was speaking to his fellow Israelites. Acts twenty-six, nine to ten. Acts twenty-six, nine to ten. He says, 'Indeed, I myself thought I must do many things contrary to the name of Jesus of Nazareth. This I also did in Jerusalem; and many of the saints I shut up in prison, having received authority from the chief priests; and when they were put to death, I cast my vote against them.' But after his conversion, he became a different person. The days of his ignorance were over. Hear what he says in Philippians five, three, five to nine. Philippians three, five, to nine. 'Secrecized the eighth day of the stock of Israel, of the tribe of Benjamin, a Hebrew of the Hebrews, concerning the law of Pharisee, concerning zeal, persecuting the church, concerning the righteousness which is in the law blameless. But what things were gained to me, these I have counted loss for Christ. Yet indeed I also count to all things lost, for the excellence of the knowledge of Christ Jesus, my Lord, for whom I have suffered the loss of all things and count them as rubbish, that I be gain Christ and be found in him, not having my own righteousness, which is from the law, but that which is through faith in Christ, the righteousness which is from God by faith.' That was a different Paul speaking there. Verse four says, 'Christ is the end of the law for righteousness to everyone who believes.' This means Christ has fulfilled all the righteousness of the law. Once you believe in Jesus Christ and are saved, you are made righteous with God. Israel was ignorant of God's righteousness because they did not understand the purpose of the law. The law revealed sin and showed that people could not keep the law. Jesus came and fulfilled it and then offered us his righteousness as we put our faith in him. Paul makes this quite clear in Galatians three, ten to thirteen. Galatians three, ten to thirteen. 'But those who depend on the law to make them right with God are under his curse; for the Scriptures say, 'Cursed is everyone who does not observe and obey all', and my emphasis is on all the commands that are written in God's book of the law. So it is clear that no one can be made right with God by trying to keep the law; for the Scriptures say, 'It is through faith that a righteous person has life', that is, the just shall live by faith. This way of faith is different from the way of the law, which says it is through obeying the law that a person has life; but Christ has rescued us from the curse pronounced by the law. When he was hung on the cross, he took upon himself the curse for our wrongdoing; for it is written in the Scriptures, 'Cursed is everyone who is hung on a tree.' Galatians three, ten to thirteen. Verse five says, uh, back, back, back to Romans, back to Romans. Verse five says, 'For Moses writes about the righteousness which is of the law.' Paul, uh, let me just read up to verse ten. 'For Moses writes about the righteousness which is of the law, the man who does those things shall live by them; but the righteousness of faith speaks in this way: Do not say in your heart, 'Who will ascend into heaven?', that is, to bring Christ down from above; or, 'Who will descend into the abyss?', that is, to bring Christ from the dead. But what does this say? The word is near you in your mouth and in your heart, that is, the word of faith which we preach, that if you confess with your mouth the Lord Jesus and believe in your heart that God has raised him from the dead, you will be saved; for with the heart one believes unto righteousness, and with the mouth confession is made unto salvation.' Paul in these verses is telling us that salvation is not as difficult as the Jews made it to appear to be, that is, by meeting all the requirements of the law. No one can ever be made right by God with God by obeying all the law's commands. He emphasizes the simplicity of how you can be saved, quoting from Moses, his speech from his speech to Israel before his death. Deuteronomy thirty, eleven to fourteen. Deuteronomy thirty, eleven to fourteen. This is Moses speaking to the children of Israel. 'For this command, which I command today, it's not too mysterious for you; nor is it far off. It is not in heaven that you should say, 'Who will ascend into heaven for us and bring it to us, that we may hear it and do it? Nor is it beyond the sea that you should say, 'Who will go over the sea for us and bring it to us, that we may hear it and do it? But the word is very near you, in your mouth and in your heart, that you may do it.' That's the, uh, passage that Paul is referring to there. Paul is applying what Moses said here to the issue of how one can be saved. Everything that needs to be done has already been done. It is finished. That was what Jesus said on the cross. No one needs to go to heaven to bring Christ down. Jesus has al- has already come down from heaven. Neither does anyone need to descend into hell to bring Christ up from the dead. He has already resurrected from the dead. You don't need to do anything that requires your own effort. Nothing more is required except your faith, your faith in the finished work of Christ. And the word of faith is near you. It is the gospel of Christ that is preached. You only have to confess your mouth with your mouth the Lord Jesus Christ and believe in your heart that God raised him from the dead, and you will be saved. It's as simple as that. By our declaration that Jesus is Lord, we proclaim his deity, that Jesus is God. The title, Lord, also implies that Jesus is the Savior. He triumphed on the cross over all the rulers and powers of evil. He is Lord because he conquered death and sin and is able and willing to rescue us from sin, the devil, and death. He rules over the church and his people. But is Jesus truly your Lord? Is he truly my Lord? How do we acknowledge his lordship in our lives? Is he the supreme leader and authority in our lives? Is he Lord o- over our minds, our emotions, our passion, our activities? Do we honor him as Lord over our family, our marriage, our relationships, and our church? It's not just enough to say, 'I confess Jesus as Lord with our mouths'. Our very lifestyle must confess him as Lord. A word about our hearts because it says we've got to believe in our hearts. The heart is a very important part of the body, not just physically, but spiritually, which is why the Bible says in Proverbs four, twenty-three, Proverbs four, twenty-three, 'Guard your heart with all diligence; for out of it spring the issues of life.' The New Living Translation puts it this way, 'Guard your heart above all else; for it determines the course of your life.' No wonder the heart plays an important part in your salvation and mine. While it is true that the words we speak do not save us, God is the one who saves us. Our words are a reflection of what's in our hearts as believers, that is, what we believe, our faith. Such words must be words that point to Jesus. Everything we say must show that we believe in the resurrection of Jesus from the dead; for anyone who denies Christ's bodily resurrection cannot claim to be a true Christian. Christ's death and resurrection are the central events of salvation. Verses eleven to thirteen. Verses eleven to thirteen. Back to Romans ten. For Scripture says, 'Whoever believes on him will not be put to shame; for there is no distinction between Jew and Greek; for the same Lord overall is rich to all who call upon him; for whoever calls on the name of the Lord shall be saved.' Whoever calls on him will not be put to disgrace. Paul is quoting from Isaiah twenty-eight, verse sixteen. Isaiah twenty-eight, verse sixteen. It does not matter whether you are a Jew or a Gentile. For emphasis, Paul makes the same point a second time, this time quoting from Joel two, thirty-two. Joel two, verse thirty-two. That is, it verse thirteen. 'For whoever calls on the name of the Lord shall be saved.' Then we go to verses fourteen to fifteen, fourteen and fifteen. Excuse me. 'How then shall they call on him in whom they have not believed? And how shall they believe in him of whom they have not heard? And how shall they hear without a preacher? And how shall they preach unless they are sent? As it is written, how beautiful are the feet of those who preach the gospel of peace, who bring glad tidings of good things.' In these two verses, Paul takes us through the steps that are necessary for anyone to come to the saving faith. He has already made the point that whoever calls on the name of the Lord shall be saved in verse thirteen. Now he comes up with several questions to describe the steps to believing in Jesus Christ. I've read it, I read those questions out. First it calls about, talks about calling on Christ, whoever calls on him. Those you can only call on him if you believe in him. What does calling on Christ mean? It means asking Christ to save you from your sin and the judgment you deserve, making a personal commitment to him as your Lord and Savior. Your call involves acknowledging that you are a sinner and you cannot save yourself, that Jesus has done everything that needs to be done for your salvation, and that you trust him to save you from your sin. Christians are people who call on the na- on the Lord Jesus Christ. But you cannot call on Jesus Christ as Lord to save you unless you trust in him as your Lord and Savior. People cannot ask Jesus to save them from their sin unless they understand and believe that he is able and willing to save everyone that comes to him. To believe in Jesus, people must hear the gospel. They need people to share with them the good news about Jesus' life, his death, his resurrection, and his coming again. They need to share also what Jesus has done for them personally and what he can do for them. Hearing, the next need of course, that Jesus, the next need is of course, is that Jesus must be preached. So there is a plea for evangelism and missions. People need to hear the good news about Jesus Christ. So preachers and teachers must be sent to take the gospel to those who are yet to believe and call on the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. For this course, God sent, God the Father sent Jesus Christ, who in turn sent his disciples and before he left commissioned all of us, his followers, to go and make disciples of all nations, teaching them. Matthew twenty-eight, nineteen to twenty. Matthew twenty-eight, nineteen to twenty. And Mark sixteen, fifteen says, 'Go into all the world and preach the gospel to every creature; he who believes and is baptized will be saved; but he who does not believe will be condemned.' How well are we be doing in obeying this commission? As you see, as you can see, it's not just the work of pastors and evangelists. It is an assignment for all believers. Let us seize the opportunities to share the gospel in our homes, in our places of work, in our communities. Jesus was very passionate about reaching people with the gospel. 'The harvest is plentiful, but the workers are few,' he said in Matthew nine, thirty-seven to thirty-eight. Matthew nine, thirty-seven to thirty-eight. Ask the Lord of the harvest therefore to send workers into the harvest field. If we cannot go physically to faraway places that need the gospel, we can send our money to support mission work all over the world. How beautiful are the feet of those who preach the gospel of peace, who bring glad tidings of good things? That's Paul quoting Isaiah fifty-two, verse seven. Isaiah fifty-two, verse seven. Verse sixteen says, 'But they have not all believed the gospel', talking about Israel. And here he's quoting from Is- uh, Isaiah fifty-three, verse one. Isaiah fifty-three, verse one. That passage that is That passage that describes the loss suffering for us. Lord who has believed our report. Paul the Apostle was a renowned missionary. He went round preaching the gospel. And even though many heard the gospel preached and believed. There were many others who heard but did not believe. This also happened to Isaiah and other prophets. They delivered God's messages to the Israelites. But they experienced rejection in the same way. Verse seventeen says, faith comes by hearing. And hearing by the word of God. The more we hear the word of God, the more we grow our faith. When we read the Bible or hear the word of God preached or taught. The less doubts we have. About our need to turn from our sins and call on the Lord to save us. The more inclined we are to trust in his ability to deliver us. Verse eighteen. But I say, have they not heard? Did Israel not hear? Yes, indeed. Of course they did. That's what Paul is telling us here. And he quotes Psalm nineteen, verse four. It's the Psalm of David. That's David describing how God's creation itself. Proclaims the glory of God. How his invisible attributes are clearly seen. Through his creation all over the world. Paul no doubt knew that Israel was familiar with the Old Testament. And could easily relate to the quotation. Uh, relate this quotation to the spread of the gospel through the Roman world. Paul is emphasizing the fact that they have heard the word of God. And then verse nineteen goes on to ask another question. Did Israel not know, Paul asks? Of course they knew, they knew. To buttress this point, he went on to quote from Deuteronomy thirty two, verse twenty one. Deuteronomy thirty two, verse twenty one. Moses was saying to Israel what God said. Let's read the entire verse. They have provoked me to jealousy. By what is not God. They have moved me to anger, this is God talking, by their foolish idols. But I will provoke them to jealousy by those who are not a nation. I will move them to anger by a foolish nation. Moses is saying here that God. Was going to embrace a people, a nation that did not know him. And use them to make Israel jealous. He was of course referring to the Gentiles, to us. Israel should have known that God was going to embrace. What he called a foolish nation. A people that lacked understanding. To make them jealous as he bestowed his blessings on them, that is, on the Gentiles. And then there is another quotation from verse twenty. Isaiah sixty five, one. That's the passage that's being quoted here. It's on the same issue. God saying, I was found by those who did not seek me. I was made manifest to those who did not look for me. Indeed, because of Israel's rejection of Christ. We Gentiles have found God. We have been brought into a right relationship with him. We have been adopted as his children. What a blessing. This chapter, chapter ten ends with another prophecy by Isaiah in Isaiah sixty five, verse two. All day long, this is again God. All day long I have stretched out my hands to a disobedient and contrary people. This describes how God in his loving kindness. Continuously offered salvation to Israel. Unfortunately, Israel, with all that God had done for them. Who had every reason to love and obey God. Refused to repent and turned to Christ in faith and be saved. How sad. I hope and pray that this does not describe us. Even those of us who are believers. Still need to continue to work out our salvation with fear and trembling. According to Philippians two, twelve. Philippians two, twelve. So that we can continue to remain in our right standing with God. Let us pray. Father, we give you praise for the way your Holy Spirit has brought your word to us today. Thank you, Lord, for saving us and including us in your family. We pray for those who are yet to receive Christ as their personal Lord and Savior. Give them ears that hear, minds that understand. And hearts that call on Jesus to save them. Give us Christians concern and compassion for them. Help us to be constantly reminded. That you have given us the privilege of telling others about Jesus. May we not fail you in this regard. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen. Next week we shall be studying Romans, chapter.